Third to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Yes. Basine. Buffalo.
Here.
Camson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Martin.
Present. Can I get a motion to go into closed session, please?
I move that we move to closed session.
Thanks, Ms. Camson. A second, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A 29 of the act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is whether to renew the Valverde Consulting Group's contract to provide training to the board when its term ends on July 1, 2023, or to put the contract out to bid again with potentially new terms and scope pursuant to Virginia's procurement laws. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A 8 of the act. The subject of this portion of the session is the same as stated in A above. Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Camson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye. Okay. We'll go into closed session in the conference room. Thank you.
Certified the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Do I get a second?
A second.
Ms. Buffalo, second in. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Okay. A resolution certify an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Now, whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Camson.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Before we begin the work session, I'd like to turn this meeting over to Dr. Birdsong for a few comments.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and good evening, everyone. Before we get started with our meeting today, I'd like to acknowledge the life of our beloved colleague Nicole Keaton Gregory. We buried Ms. Gregory today. In fact, just before the meeting, many of us were coming back from her burial. And she served Norfolk Public Schools for 24 years, for 24 years faithfully. She served our children and our families, and she's definitely going to be missed. Her service this morning was absolutely beautiful, and she would be so proud of her children and her husband for the wonderful job that they did today. Her daughter sang a song, you know, in honor of her mother, and she was just so strong as she stood up there, and she just honored her mother in the most beautiful way. And her husband, it was very surprising for many of us just to listen to him speak about his wife. It was just so beautiful. You could clearly see that Carlton loved Nicole. He had so many wonderful things to say about her and a beautiful message for us all that I will never, ever forget. And I also want our NPS family to remember that we still have two of our children with us, one at Norview Middle School who is in eighth grade, little Carlton who will be going to ninth grade next year at Norview High School, and then we have Josiah who's a senior this year at Norview High School going on to Morehouse, I believe, and we're just so proud of him. Many of you may recall the publication last year that I put out, the Drive for Five publication, and within that booklet, we featured Dream, who is the youngest daughter of Nicole and Carlton, and she is studying now at Virginia State, and we're so proud of her and their oldest daughter Jade. So please keep the family in prayer. The children will need us, so let's continue to surround that family with love and everything that they need. And again, if we could just, for a moment, a brief moment, a minute, have honor moment of silence in memory of Nicole Keaton Gregory.
Item 3.01, the Booker T. Washington High School feasibility study. I had considered taking this off of the agenda, but I just wanted to keep it on here just so I could say a couple, you know, brief statement. I'm sorry I wasn't at the last meeting, had a personal emergency I had to tend to. But I do want to say I did go back and looked at, you know, read the resolution, looked at the meetings, the presentation, so on and so forth. And what I've concluded is that the school, Dr. Birdsong and the administration are still in the middle of their process and are not prepared for a recommendation. I went back and looked at the timeline. The timeline has a recommendation following community and stakeholder engagement, and that would be on August of 2023. So we are a little premature in talking about recommendations right now and making a decision. So I would like to allow the administration the time and the courtesy of continuing the work, and then when we have, we receive those recommendations, then we can start asking questions and, you know, making comments on that. But until then, I would like to see this process followed through. And that's all I wanted to say about that. Okay?
Okay, that's all.
What's that?
May at the floor.
Sure.
Thank you. I know that you made an assessment about what you've looked at, but I also, I'm mistaken, HBA also stated before this body that they were responsible for the physical structure and their recommendation and not the academic component. And I think that that was what the continuation of the conversation was really leading to that we all participated in and unfortunately weren't here to be a part of that conversation, but really looking at the academic component of it. If we need more time on that one, that's fine, but I do believe that what the superintendent was asking was for clear direction on the academic component of it, and I still believe that that still lingers out there. But as far as the trigger to keep the conversations going with the steering committee, I think that we need to send a clear direction out. We want to see that continue to go on, but I do believe that there is going to need to be a point where we come back and clearly give clear direction to the superintendent and to the administration about the academic component. There's additional information I know that I've shared with everyone, and I actually printed out some additional copies for you all, some things that is a part of even the governance training. Mr. Jordan, myself have had our conversations and continue to have conversations, and I was even enlightened about a memo from 2017 that was submitted in regards to a STEAM program. And so when I kept saying where did all that come from, that helped me to fill in that there was something prior to me getting on the board for that. I think that there's, the board as a whole, based on the conversation, was in pretty much an agreement on it, but I just think that we need to get to a point where we can send clear direction, and I think that's what our superintendent administration is asking for, but where we can, and I did put a motion to defer for here for action. So that was for us to take up something today, so.
Okay, so let me go back. I did go and look at, I went back and revisited the presentation. The presentation has both the facility and the educational programming, so those are both in there. So the direction that we gave to the superintendent was to do a feasibility study that included both, the physical and the educational pieces, and those recommendations will be forthcoming in August, like according to the timeline.
Okay, so Dr. Birdsong, you clear on that? Is that, that's, I want to make sure that you, because we were back in this conversation because we said there wasn't clarity, so in August.
I can show you the slide. We can.
No, no, I'm asking the superintendent, so we're going to get academic and physical in, on August.
Yes, which we were going to do anyway, but there was, you know, we just wanted to make sure there wasn't something now specific that you were looking at and wanted us to do more research on, but this was a natural involvement for the community and their feedback around the existing program and how they want to see it change or stay the same. That was the purpose of the feasibility study.
It's both.
Yeah, and the physical structure supporting, of course, the academic program. But you can't even get to the physical structure until there are decisions about the academic program.
Okay.
And so we'll be prepared to bring those recommendations back to the board in August.
Dr. Martin, what you described was a little different than where I thought you were going with it, and I would say, since we have a packed agenda today and had a elongated closed session, if we could just come back at the, at our, do a session, a workshop prior to our business meeting in two weeks and allow for the addressing that Mr. Clanton agreed to defer, and I think we can have some opportunity for the board members to just have some clarity over the next two weeks, and I think we can come back and accomplish what we were originally tasked to do today. What you described in going to the existing calendar is, was a point of discussion at the last meeting, and that's where I think Mr. Clanton was trying to say that we were going to provide that clarity today. I don't think what you described accomplishes that, but I think we can accomplish it if we just defer this to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Moving on to item 3.02, thank you, Mr. Freely, the gifted education plan update. We have Ms. Steed, Sted, sorry. Hi. How are you this evening, afternoon?
Very well, thank you. Is it evening now?
It's 5:08.
Evening, right?
All right, we'll begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hold on one second. We're waiting for it to open up.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair Martin, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Buffalo, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to be up here to present an update on this first year's implementation of our revised gifted local plan. I am excited to share our progress. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for believing in our vision to provide more equitable opportunities to all our students in the division. Our big ideas behind the revisions of the gifted local plan included a focus on talent development and on services for all students regardless of the label. The school board's support of providing more gifted resource teachers, funding after-school enrichment, and continuing our partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary is making an impact. The Norfolk Public Schools gifted local plan is aligned with the new Norfolk Public Schools strategic plan, where our students identified for services will match our division's diverse demographics. So during this first year of implementation, Norfolk Public Schools has already seen positive changes. This was our first year of our emerging scholars talent pool, which is increasing exposure and enrichments to students who showed potential in their schools across the district. We have continued our collaboration with the College of William &amp; Mary, who has developed professional development and training for all our teachers. The relaunch of the Arts and Sciences After-School Enrichment Program has allowed more schools to provide fun and engaging opportunities to excited students across the division. Elementary schools have been implementing the research-based strategy of clustering our talent pool and gifted students, which benefits all students. Norfolk Public Schools, elementary schools are now allocated full-time gifted resource teachers, with the exception of PB Young and Tidewater Park, who are K-2 and 3-5 combined. Gifted resource teachers are now able to regularly push in to all kindergarten and first-grade classes, exposing all students to high-level thinking, plus preparing those students for the annual COGAT screener. And we are also excited to announce the upcoming gifted resource teacher cohort to ensure Norfolk Public Schools has a pool of qualified gifted resource teachers to serve our kids. This school year, 2223, as I mentioned, was the first year of the Norfolk Public Schools' emerging scholars talent pool students, these determined by the results of the universal screener in 2022. The department provided pull-out services to 151 second-grade students who showed potential to benefit from increased exposure and enrichment. These students will all be retested and processed for gifted education in grade four. This year's gifted identification process, based upon the first-grade screener in February, identified another 147 emerging scholars who scored in the top 15% of their school on their gifted COGAT test. This means next school year in 2324, Norfolk Public Schools will have a total of 298 students from across the districts in grade two and three receiving services in addition to our identified gifted students. Norfolk Public Schools' partnership with William &amp; Mary Center for Gifted Education continues to be productive. Last summer, we partnered to provide training to over 100 teachers across the district. This training included how to better identify those gifted characteristics in our underrepresented populations, as well as how to collaborate with your school's DRT to provide higher-level strategies that benefit all students. William &amp; Mary has provided Norfolk Public Schools now an online repository of training for all teachers to access on differentiation and increasing critical thinking practices for the classroom. DRTs have been invited to their nationally renowned Twice Exceptional Conference at no cost, as well as a national curriculum conference for a much reduced cost. And in addition, 45 seventh through 10th grade Norfolk Public School students will be attending a two-week STEM leadership summer camp free of charge known as Camp Launch. This camp was specially designed for high-ability students from low-income households, and it will be held on the campus of the College of William &amp; Mary. Sometimes a picture, or in this case, many pictures, are worth a thousand words. Again, we thank the school board for approving the reestablish of the Arts and Sciences After-School Enrichment Program. Students were excited to participate in the many programs across 31 schools, including chess, step club, theater, art, gymnastics, ukulele club, just to name a few. In addition to these 31 schools, there were a few schools that did not participate directly with the Arts and Sciences program, as they were already in part of the 21st Century Schools with funding for after-school programs. However, our department was still able to provide additional materials or other resources to help enrich those after-school programs. Now we will focus on data surrounding our identification protocols. This 2022 referral data by subgroup will serve as baseline data for our five-year plan, in line with our objective to increase the diversity of our identified students. The goal is to see an upward trend in underrepresented subgroups being referred every year. The total 562 referrals represents a 31% higher rate of referrals than in 2021, so more students overall are now being considered for identification. And of the 562, 182 were found eligible, or 32% of those students referred. Next, we will focus on our annual gifted screening of our first-grade students. Norfolk Public Schools' scores from the February first-grade screener, using the cognitive abilities test, or known as COGAT, are showing more underrepresented students with the potential for gifted identification. Although the percentages here by subgroups are not where we want yet, they are moving in the right direction. And for the 366 who moved forward, 72% of them were found eligible for services, or 12% of all first-grade students who took the COGAT. Full-time DRTs are regularly pushing in to our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms and are making an impact. Students whose COGAT scores made them eligible to be processed for gifted identification has grown as a district by 21%, and some schools have seen a significantly higher percentage, as seen here. The emerging scholars talent pool students' average COGAT score also improved. These are the students who score in the top 15% of their school. This slide indicates the division-wide average score for emerging scholars rose 6% as a division just in one year, and for some schools, the percentage was much higher. You can see here some of the schools whose top 15% COGAT score average increased significantly. Transitioning now to Norfolk Public Schools' middle-school gifted program, the Young Scholars, applications this year were received from 31 different elementary schools. The number of schools that applicants were accepted from was 26 of the 31 schools. The current Young Scholars demographics do not yet match our divisions. However, as you can see from our incoming sixth graders, we will be beginning to close the gap and will continue to focus on increasing the diversity of the program. Finally, Norfolk Public Schools is excited to begin our Grow Your Own Gifted Resource Program, starts next week, where 14 current Norfolk Public Schools teachers will be trained and endorsed in gifted education through a partnership with Regent University. Again, we thank the school board for your support of our mission to ensure that our students have the opportunities needed to meet their potential. With that, I welcome your questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Clanton, and then Ms. Basine.
Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Ms. Camson.
Great information. I wanted to go back to the slide at the emerging scholars benchmark scores, 2021, 2022. This is really good to see, but like I jumped out, James Monroe went from 62 to 91, and some, I think also Chesterfield with the 71. Can you kind of expand upon what may have potentially occurred there that worked well?
So one thing, Chesterfield is the first year they've had a full-time gifted resource teacher, so that made a direct impact. With James Monroe, it's their second year, but up till then, they've only had two, and when I asked the GRT, I said, what happened at James Monroe? And she just, she admitted, I mean, she's been able to push in more, but at the same time, she said they just have some exceptional students, so, and James Monroe as a whole is really making efforts to work as a team to grow the school. So there's a lot of factors involved, but it's still, it's still good, it's still good news, so.
But a big factor is when we make the investment, we can see the results.
Absolutely. That's what, thank you.
Ms. Basine, go ahead.
I was going to say, I was, I'm glad that slide is up, because I think one of the benefits of having the full-time dedicated GRT in that school is where, you know, that, where you see that trend of the increase in the benchmark, you know? And you probably, my guess is probably see an increase with other kids too, because you're pushing in. But, so speaking of which, so you talk about the COGAT being used to identify emerging scholars. And so, you know, we're talking a lot about literacy and numeracy, and so as a board or as, you know, as we're talking collaboratively here, for what limitations do you see with, you know, some of the challenges that we have around literacy impacting, you know, gifted identification? And I think it's great that you're looking at other characteristics of giftedness, but how are you kind of, you know, working with some of, you know, some of those challenges in the identification process?
So the first-grade COGAT screener, there is no reading, so it's all picture-based. So the universal screener, that eliminates that barrier.
Right.
It is a relevant concern for the grades, for the referrals, but we don't, that's where we look at the other criteria. So if they don't do as well on the test section, per se, where there's reading, we look at the student work, we talk to the teachers, we look, we interview the student, we get the behavior rating forms from the teachers and the parents and so forth. So we take in other factors. The literacy has been an issue. COVID really put everybody behind, even our gifted identificated, identified students. So just like anybody else, they come at different levels, and there's been remediation. The nice thing about, again, having full-time gifted resource teachers in the schools, they can collaborate more with those teachers, and so help them with strategies like Jacob's Ladder, which works for, it's a gifted program, but it really works for all students and scaffolding, and being able to push in and work with those small groups, because the kids, they're all at different levels, and even the ones not identified might pre-assess out of a subject. So if the DRT could come in, they can work with them, or they can provide help with the teachers to help with the other kids that aren't there yet. So we are aware of it. We have some reading strategies that we're doing, we're working with the teachers on as well.
Okay. All right. And my next question, in terms of those that are being referred, how many of the students with IAPs? Because I hear a lot about, you know, the twice, twice-exceptional students and sometimes missing those students who sometimes find themselves, you know, with behaviors and sometimes find themselves in ISS instead of when really they're just, you know, gifted and they're being missed, I think, which we know nationally is, you know, an issue, but we.
So I don't have that data for this year yet, but I, it will be tracked going forward, because we're going to start tracking specifically for our twice-exceptional, the students. However, it is a focus in our department. We've been working with Dr. Carpenter from William &amp; Mary, who is an expert at twice-exceptional, and she's provided us a wealth of content. We've been working with, we have some, one of our gifted resource teachers, that's her expertise. She's got her PhD in twice-exceptional, and she's done some conferences and PD for our teachers already. So we will continue to, we've already partnered and reached out to our learning support people, who are very much on board with collaborating with us as well, and speaking for you, but she's been very, they've been very supportive, and we want to work together because agreed 100%. And we are also going through the summer, work on a new behavioral checklist, because I feel, and not just me, but some of our parents in the DIAC and some of our DRTs feel that it doesn't accurately recognize some of those underrepresented behaviors, populations. And so we're going to relook at how that might be better used, and we need to train our teachers on how to identify those characteristics on the kids, the twice-exceptional, or any student that doesn't have those stereotypical gifted behaviors as well. So that's definitely on our to-do list to help with that.
Okay. And then one last question, quick question. So at the high school level, like what else aside from the academic programs, you know, specialty programs, are you looking? know, specialty programs, are you looking at other ways to enhance, you know, whether it's extracurricular programming, or, you know, for students at the high school level, whether it's, you know, like I said, extracurricular programming, or in-school programming, to really, you know, provide greater opportunities for high school students?
Absolutely. So, we have our advanced placement, we have our honors, and we know that. And we're trying, the Arts and Sciences Program, we're trying to, we're pushing that out in our high schools, we're providing teachers extra pay to provide those after-school activities. But for the in-schools, sometimes, some of those students need something different and unique, right? And so, we are, that's another thing we're working on this summer, is building, creating some curriculum, some class curriculum for our middle and our high school, an elective of some sort, to help those students kind of adjust, because a lot of times, they don't quite fit in, or they're having difficulty, like, they've had an easy time up until secondary, and then suddenly, they have to work, and they don't know how to, because they haven't had to. So, we are looking at building those type of criteria or curriculum in our, especially for our sixth grade and our ninth grade, our transitioning students. So, that's the goal, is develop a class, and then ideally, we would, we would ideally get more full-time GRTs at the high school, so they could teach those classes, or they would work with somebody to teach those elective courses as an option, and really, not just for identified gifted, it would be meant for them, but really for any student that might need critical thinking skills, or something like that. But that's definitely in the works.
Well, great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, congratulations on finally giving us the support we need for our gifted children. I mean, we was begging for it, when we'd have one or two days a week, and then we wonder why we don't have our children identified. This is a huge jump, and I'm very excited to see that you and your staff, everyone is doing that, it's making the difference, as we can see already in the numbers. I was looking at the page that has the eligible students for identification, I don't think it had a page number, oh, wait, there it is. Thirteen? Page thirteen, slide thirteen. Now I see it. Okay. Yes, I think.
One that says 21%.
Yes, that's it. Okay. So, Mike, and I'm looking at the increases, and, of course, they all have increases, but some of the increases are hugely higher than the others. And, and I'm sure that a lot of this has to do with what we just talked about, was the fact that we now have support for our students. Just because you're gifted doesn't mean that you're just all of a sudden gonna be able to know how to use that. Have you looked at what was, so we know they've all got staffing in there now, so that's equal. So, the huge difference is, the huge difference because it hasn't been supported enough, and now it's getting support, and that's why it's jumping? Is, in other words, is this a picture of uneven support in the past?
Very much so, for a majority of them. Most of those schools haven't had full-time GRTs, except for the last couple of years, so now we're starting to see growth. Some of those big jumps, I'll be transparent, they're a little misleading, so they go from two to six, but that's still a 300% or 200% increase.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying there. All right, now, I didn't catch that piece, okay.
Yeah, so, some of those big numbers are due to the, you know, they just had such low counts to begin with, but we are making progress, and we want to continue that. A lot of it is, yes, it's lack, it's not, it's not equitable resources at some of the schools. And even, even again, they might, they have a full-time, but they have a K through H, so really, they only have a part-time for elementary and middle school as well. So, it's really just ensuring that we're trying to give everybody the same equitable services as much as possible. Now, coming off of COVID, you know, some schools were at a different place than other schools, and so you might have been able to see a jump, like, that first year, last year, but now those other schools that are recovering, now you're seeing them be able to catch up, if that makes sense.
So, we would expect over time for these numbers to start being even?
Yes, absolutely, that's the goal.
If we're in year two, this is year two of it.
That's, well, this is year one.
I was kind of thinking of it as one, oh, okay, then that, because I was like, whoa, I missed a whole year. Everyone's laughing, because hers ain't probably true. Okay, so that, that answers that question, because this, I think I'd like, maybe when you do it next year, if you would maybe put a side-by-side one, so that we could see the actual numbers too?
Pretheses or something, you know?
Something, yeah, not, not rush out and do it today, or anytime, but when you're doing this, these end-of-the-year kind of reports, that would be very helpful.
The numbers and the percentages.
Right, because this is, this is something that we've ignored for so long.
Of course, I'm happy to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and I echo everyone that has celebrated the good work. And my, my question is very similar to Ms. Campson's. On the previous slide, on slide 12, and I know that you've referenced the increases, which I think are exciting. My question is, are there interim goals that, that you have, that you're targeting? I mean, I think increases are great, but, like, when I look at this chart, do you have a goal for each subgroup, or each year?
I think, we were looking five years down the road, we want to meet our demographics, but I think that's, I think that's an excellent, something that we should do. We should make a goal every single year. We want to see for this subgroup, this present of an increase, is that, is that what you're...
Yeah, I'm saying, if there's some goal over five years, I think that would be something we could monitor. And then, on an interim basis, if there's, like, let's say, next year, if I'm understanding this correctly, that 8.6% of Black students were eligible for gifted identification, then is the goal for next year to get 12%? And then, when we come back next year, we can say, did we meet the goal, did we exceed the goal, are we behind the goal, and be able to have a conversation around whatever it is that we are at that time? And if, for example, if we didn't reach the goal, then what is it that we may need to do, or do differently, or provide resources? But I think if we have those, if you consider having those goals, it would add, illuminate even more how we're progressing towards what we think we can, can achieve.
That's an excellent idea. Would you, the school board, want to give us those goals, or do you want us to propose something?
I, I think you probably would be the, in a better position to propose it.
I can look at national, yeah, I could definitely look at national norms and bring that, I think that's an excellent idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Ed. Appreciate the work you're doing, you and your staff. All right, up next, we have the Family Life Education proposal update with Dr. Cole.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Then start when you're ready.
The Family Life, right, yeah, okay.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the school board, and Dr. Bertschel. I'm here this afternoon to present updated information pertaining to the Family Life Education. As was reviewed during the last presentation, the Code of Virginia required the VDOE to develop a Family Life Education standards back in 1987, for each local board to review the curricula at least once every seven years, and that parents have the right to review the program, and the right to excuse their child from all or any part of family life During the last presentation, a request was made around any research connecting literacy to teen pregnancy. In an article posted in the National Institute of Health in 2012, a study of 12,339 females in seventh grade showed that females with less than average reading levels were two-and-a-half times more likely to give birth in their earlier teens, compared with those that had an average reading levels. Additionally, a significant interaction between reading skill and race and ethnicity indicated that Hispanic and African-American girls had a greater risk of teen childbearing by literacy than those who identified themselves as white. This slide shows data from both across Virginia and within Norfolk. Across Virginia, 48.2% of teen pregnancies are linked to white teenagers, while the white population is 68.6, 68.8% across the Commonwealth, making the pregnancy rate 20.6% less than that population average, while for Black teenagers, the rate is 15.8% higher than the population average across the Commonwealth. When looking at Norfolk specifically, 21.7% of teen pregnancies are linked to white teenager, while the white population is 42.9%, making the pregnancy rate 21.2% lower than the population average, while for Black teenagers, the rate is 33.9% above the population average. Therefore, Norfolk has a pregnancy gap of 55.1% between Black and white teenagers, and this rate is 18.7% higher than the state's rate, gap, rather. The Virginia Department of Health and Health Resources and Services Administration provided a grant to Eastern Virginia Medical School to implement a program to support effective Family Life Education, and we discussed this during the last presentation, and part of this grant was to partner with local schools and community organizations. EVMS adopted the Get Real Curriculum, which was published in 2019 to address the SEL needs, anatomy, and physiology concepts, and the focus on responsible and healthy decisions about relationships and health behaviors. As mentioned at the last presentation, 408 of NPS students voluntarily participated in the Get Real Curriculum when NPS was encouraged not to teach Family Life Education due to the pandemic. The students and parents of the students had positive responses to the survey conducted following the voluntary class, as well as saw positive growth in learning. And as requested, here's the demographic breakdown of those 408 participants. And again, the new topics being addressed, as outlined in the VDOE Family Life Education standards, are those that are italicized and bold-faced. These are the middle-school topics, and these are the high-school topics. As noted earlier in the presentation, parents and guardians may opt their children out of all lessons, or specific lessons. If approved, the new curriculum will have specific letters sent home each day for each lesson. This information will also be posted on the website, with division-level and school-level calls, emails, and text messages being sent to families. To gain more insight, the survey window was extended through April 27th, and three additional community forum meetings were scheduled and announced prior to spring break. As seen here, the Norview High School meeting that was added had four attendees, the Southside STEM meeting had two attendees, and the Maury High School meeting had 18 attendees. There were also a total of 202 survey responses, up from the 98 that was reported last time. These were received from parents, students, community members, employees, and other groups. Demographic data was received from 75 of the respondents, with the self-reported breakdown shown on this slide. And here is the representation of ZIP codes from within Norfolk. There were some outside ZIP codes that were just taken off the graph. And into the data, 76.2% of the respondents believe Family Life Education is very important. This data show the level of curriculum the respondents reviewed, so half of them reviewed both, and about a quarter reviewed either middle or high school. And the majority of responses stated the topics were excellent for the indicated grade level, and that the content addresses both physical and SEL needs. They also thought the resources were excellent for engaging students, age-appropriate, and they included current information. The strategies and activities for engaging students, providing opportunity for student collaboration, and for individual reflection were also rated highest in the excellent There was also a majority of strong support for the terms referred to in the survey. 122 of the 202 respondents are 60.4% supported teaching all of the topics listed on the survey. Specific topics that were opposed are listed on this slide. Please note that participants were able to choose more than one topic to oppose. Also, the items with an asterisk are currently taught within the Family Life Education curriculum. Eighty-six respondents chose to leave an additional comment. Of those comments, 46 of them, or 53.5% of the comments left, were positive and supportive of the content. Thirty-five, or 40.7%, were opposed to various topics that are listed on the slide. The remaining comments were not applicable to curriculum topics. Included in the uploaded documents were copies of each of the survey responses for your review. During the community input forums, the topics listed on this slide were communicated as concerns to the Get Real Curriculum and Family Life in general. Allowing an opt-in versus an opt-out. The grade-six curriculum may be too advanced for students that are 10 to 11 years old. The cost of the curriculum, which we did note, there are no costs, as the grant provided the curriculum, and will provide student workbooks.
Little deep visit.
Sorry.
Just give me a little background music, that's all.
The mixing of gender, which is a research-based practice, and we do some of that across Family Life already with an NPS. The communications to opt-out, which will be improved for next year, is already discussed, or mentioned. The condom demonstration, which has been decided to do via video, so it's consistent across all classes, and not a live demonstration. They felt the process is being rushed, and again, having gender identity as a part of the curriculum. Allowing teachers to discuss higher-level grade topics that were suggested in the teacher guidebook, however, it has been discussed, and that will not be allowed, and we'll emphasize that through professional development. The grade level is the cap of what will be taught. And the general connection of the curriculum to Planned Parenthood was also mentioned. Input from the Student Health Advisory Committee, discussion of the curriculum are included on this slide. Ensuring the opt-out process is well-communicated, the concern of teacher reluctance to teach certain subjects, which will be, which will be handled with shared teaching responsibilities, so if there is a reluctance, we'll do class switches with teachers, and consistency on the condom demonstration, which we already discussed, we're gonna do it the video instead of a live demonstration. Some of the members were supportive of the full curriculum, and some stated they'd pull their students from certain lessons. However, it was shared with me, the general consensus was to adopt the new curriculum. Therefore, the electronic copies were posted on board docs under our last work session, so the April work session. The individual survey responses were posted under tonight's work session, and our next steps are for a projected board vote as May 17, 2023. Thank you again for allowing me to be here, and I am here for any questions with Mr. Brady and Mr. Person.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Thank you for that information. I, as one of the people that took the opt-out kids, when this, they hit, what, in 1980s, 1987, maybe, is when it, when it first started? What I found that was really important, and it's what you've already said, but I think when I really hit it harder, so that our parents are really, really aware of it, was the fact that they had the control to opt their child out. And, and it wasn't a, and it's not a set of, either you're there the whole time, or you're opting out the whole time. It allowed the parents, by topic, to go in and make a choice, because a lot of parents that were uncomfortable with some of these items, which they have every right to be, they're the parent, but they did find other ones that they liked, other pieces, and, and the children that did opt out were sent to someone for, for some instruction, didn't include that particular topic that was being done that day. And so, that allowed the parents to make their own decisions about what their child is exposed to and learning from. And I, and you said that, that's all in this data, but I wanted to make sure that we pull that out, because parents, some parents are concerned about it, as they're the parents, and if they have a concern about it, they are allowed to opt it out. But maybe the one that they're doing tomorrow, or next week, usually they were weekly back then, is, is that they could go or not go. And, and really, the schools put a lot of work into it to make that happen, because somebody, you don't just send them down and give them a crayon.
Right.
They should be using their time, like everyone else, in a way that's academic. And so, I know I would have to prepare ahead, I usually put K and 1 together, and 2 and 3, and 4, and 5, so that we could do something that was academic, but was not in the particular thing, that their parents chose not to have them do that time. We did a lot of poetry writing, and things like that, that you have time to do, that are still improving your academic skills. So, I just want to make sure that our parents understand that they are the decision-makers here. Yes, we have, the mass majority of them put their children in it. Yes, we have the mass majority of them put their children in it, but nothing wrong with not doing that, you're, once again, the parent. And so I just want to make sure everyone's really clear on this, is that no parent has to put their child to see any of it, or they can pick and choose what they do, and the person that's in charge of taking care of those kids just have to take a little more time in the evening to make sure that everyone has something that is academically appropriate for the child, so that they're not just sitting there wasting their time, the parent wants them to be in school to learn. So parents, talking to you right up here, is you can choose for your child. You can't choose for other people's children, but you can choose for your child, because we respect the fact that you're the parent there. So I hope that that just, a little extra emphasis that our parents become more comfortable, because some parents are very concerned, I've had phone calls, and they're concerned, and I understand that. And so I just want to make sure that the parents understand that they do have every right to have their children pulled out as requested.
Thank you, Ms. Campson, go ahead, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Paul, I saw SHAC input, what's that acronym? Can you kind of let everybody know what that stands for?
It's the Student Health Advisory Committee.
And that's made up of who?
It's made up of officials who apply to be a member, so it's made up of medical professionals, it's made up of community members, it's made up of some of our school nurses, and its liaison is Dr. Mar, our senior director of school hours.
So these are medical professionals and others throughout the community.
Correct.
Some may even be parents. I know Dr. Gabriel, pediatrician, she's a parent, and others that are here. I think that Ms. Campson made a very good note on this, and that's the fact, that there are some parents who are concerned. There's a lot of misinformation and disinformation that's being placed in the community in regards to the actions for which, and being very hyper-partisan that's out there. But I think that we have to go back to the fact that, in public education, we're here for all of our students, each student. And when it gets back to that particular point, parents always have the final say. Even whether or not your child goes to public education, you have the choice to put them in private or anywhere else, which you also have the choice to determine whether or not they're going to participate in certain courses, and I think that that needs to be highlighted. And those who would continue to push inaccurate information about this process, I think that you've outlined it quite well for us, that we have been intentional about bringing this information in and those who participate in it, then also that that information's been submitted to an external party of this board to make a recommendation to this board, which is made up of professionals, so that we can make an informed decision. But even in that case, if the board decides it wants to go with this, the parents still ultimately have the final say. And I think that that's important for the community to take back, and important for those who would continue to put misinformation or anything against this. So I applaud the administration in this particular point, and I think that needs to be highlighted publicly for doing your due diligence and bringing this information back to us. But before I leave, I just want to make this very public. When I read this article that came from Fox News, that it talked about in a headline, "Virginia Governor Youngkin Untracked to Restore Parental Rights Against Woke Education Bureaucrats." I want individuals to understand what the definition of woke means. Woke is an adjective derived from African-American vernacular English, meaning alert to racial prejudice and discrimination. So when I hear things as an African-American male, or individuals who talk about woke, it is a personal offense to me, and it should be a personal offense to any others. We're not doing that when we talk about making sure that we provide an educational system that is inclusive of all students. That is important. And as this individual, as an elected member of this school body, and a member of my community, I will speak up against any, anything that takes that or puts that out front to try to divide us. So I just wanted to point that out, I appreciate the work, I will be voting in support of this, and let the message go back loud and clear to our parents, you have the final say, you always have an opportunity to make sure that you're involved, and we encourage you to be involved in your educational process of your child. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Paul, for that update on the, on this curriculum. I too applaud the efforts of the administration, Dr. Birdsong, for bringing forward this curriculum. A comprehensive sexual health education program is critically important, and it's critically important for the reasons partly of what Mr. Clayton just said, for being inclusive, and for addressing, you know, public health principles, it's rooted, it's medically accurate, it's rooted in public health principles, and rooted in human rights. And with it, I think we're saving lives, which has been shown in research, and unfortunately, too many districts, too many states are not utilizing this curriculum, but there are several that are moving towards a comprehensive curriculum, so, which is great. And I'm proud to be one of those districts that is beginning to, that will hopefully utilize this curriculum, so I will be supporting it. I do have a couple of questions, though, because I want to be clear on what we're doing, so that when I do get asked questions, I'm answering them correctly as well. So we are in line with the Virginia SOLs. We are, but in addition to the way I have been responding to this, is that we are in line with the Virginia SOLs, however, we are, by being comprehensive, we have the SOLs, but then we are including additional information and depth to the topic and the concepts that are part of the SOLs.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to be clear that that, because that's how I've been describing the curriculum to people, just to make sure that when I'm explaining it, I'm explaining it correctly. The other question I have is, you talked about teachers, and just making sure that they're explaining when they're teaching the content, so I think that's also a really important piece of this, and what kind of training they're going to be receiving. I know the curriculum, the Get Real curriculum, has training for teachers, so what will we have in place, will they be engaged in that training?
Absolutely. So some of our teachers have gone through the training as we prepared, because we weren't sure how many numbers we'd have.
Okay.
For the voluntary classes. And that was a big part of the grant, was the professional development part of it as well, but that will continue on, and there will be annual training, because the key and the goal here is consistency, so that each classroom is learning the same, the same content and the same curriculum in the same way. That's an important part of a comprehensive family life education program. So the simple answer is yes, we've done a lot of training, and we're going to continue on with our partnership with EVMS and do more professional development if the board opts to go with this curriculum. It's an intensive part of the work to be done.
Okay. And lastly, I just, for any board members that might be on the fence, I don't know if this helps, but sometimes it helps, but the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecologists, and there are a variety of other medical and scientific organizations that also support comprehensive sexual health education for, in school, in schools, and so I think, you know, that's always something that reassures me that we're doing the right thing, so if that helps, if you're on the fence, I think that's, I'm happy to share those two, so with you all, but.
This reminded me of something in what you were saying when you were talking earlier about how this does satisfy the S, the Standards of Learning set forth by the Virginia Department of Education, but it also goes beyond, because it gives them a practical experience and understanding of what this actually is. If you're going to, you know, partake in this, this is the proper, you know, way in certain, like contraceptives and things like that, how to use them. And I just think it's so interesting, because if you take this subject matter, or take this process and you put it into another subject matter, I'm always hearing, why are you doing all this testing and not teaching practical skills, right, to set them up for the future? And here we are doing that, and, you know, there's been some criticisms such as in that article, so, you know, just the irony is not lost.
Right, because we know that this isn't really about that.
Our children need to know about their bodies.
Right, and I support everything Mr. Clayton just said, in that, you know, our students and our school district will not be fodder for any anti, you know, LGBT or anti-African-American, you know, this, that is not something I will stand for, and, you know, right there with Mr. Clayton, and, you know, so I won't support that, so.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
I think it's important to share also my perspective and support of the work that the administration has done, very methodical work, evidence-based, and I'll echo what Ms. Bassin said about the support from the American Academy of Pediatrics and Obstetrics and Gynecology. When you open up your presentation with the data that is specific to Norfolk, it becomes very important for us to not be oblivious to the fact that these are our students, and they are going through these things. And as a pediatrician in the area, I have diagnosed teen pregnancy, and it is not a conversation fun to have in the emergency room or in the office. And for a young lady, that conversation will totally change her course of life and direction, not to say that it cannot be redirected. But for us, it is, it's not just checking a box of revisiting our curriculum as the law requires, but it is also, let's not only look at this curriculum, but what can we do more for our students, and what are the needs of our students? And here in Norfolk Public Schools, I firmly believe that this administration embraces the parent as the first teacher and educator of the child.
Absolutely.
Before they even come into our buildings, the parent is the first one. I feel that way as a parent with Norfolk Public Schools, I always feel like I am supported that way. And I don't want any parent of our wonderful school division to feel like they are being alienated from this decision, as Ms. Campson said, as Mr. Clayton said, as Ms. Bassin said, and as I feel we all believe. They have the ability, if they're not comfortable, if the parent wants to be that teacher for that particular subject, or to impart their values, whatever they might be, they have full autonomy to do so. They can leave the math and science and English to us, and they can take care of everything else, we are fine with that, as the board. But this is an opportunity for us to bring our curriculum in alignment, updated, and to really provide some very medically relevant education to our students, and hopefully make a difference for them. So I'm in support of it, and this is, this has nothing to do with politics, but everything to do with setting our students up for success.
Thank you, very well said. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
So I guess I'm the one struggling, and I accept that. I have some, some questions to just help me to better understand some things, and then I'll, you know, normally we don't share personal things, but I'll share some of my personal things. So can we just go back to the beginning and just kind of re-explain what our options are? I know that there's a curriculum that's been developed, that's being recommended that we adopt. That's a option that we have before us. Can you just explain again, what the options are as a school board, what we're required to do, and what our options are?
So the options on the table are to adopt the new curriculum to align with the twenty-twenty standards. You also have the option of the board to say, we're not going to teach family life education in Norfolk Public Schools, and it's an at-home only, no support from the school division. And you have the option of sending us back to the drawing board and say, we want something different to meet the standards. Those are really your three options.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Then I just want you to kind of help me, I couldn't quite follow all the data. So on the slide where you had the comparisons.
Which do you know?
Slide four. Slide four.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers up there, I do apologize about that.
No, I just want to make sure I'm following it. So I understand that one is to give us a sense of the number of teen pregnancies that we have in Virginia and we have in Norfolk. I assume the white-black thing is, and other is, kind of aligning it with our demographics as a school system.
And that's the way it's reported on the Virginia Health Department site, is white, black, other, so that was the way we could pull the data.
Yeah, so can you just give me a sense of what, and maybe my colleagues know, if you don't, but what's trying to be shown in terms of the racial, or at least what we call race?
So I think.
No such thing as race, but what we call race.
Yeah, so I think what's important is, across the Commonwealth, we already have a gap of thirty-six point four percent, that's the average gap across every, every area in the Commonwealth, between white pregnancy, teen pregnancy, and black teen pregnancy. So the gap is thirty-six point four percent higher possibility for your black teen females. If you focus the data down to Norfolk, it's fifty-five point one percent. So that chart on the bottom is what really narrows it down, so the gap widens in Norfolk than what it is across the state.
And I assume there's some, I get that, that there's some, something we should glean from that. So then to the, I guess, the point of the, I guess, the Philadelphia study, that was looking at the impact of literacy, at least in the nineties.
Best we could find, Mr. Jordan.
No, no, it's fine, no, it's, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, that what this study found was that the, more that our girls, in this case, are reading on grade level, then the less likely they are to experience teen pregnancy, is that correct?
That's what the article states, and I think, as the board has stated, and administratively stated, literacy is the key to a lot.
Right.
And this ties it to the teen pregnancy rate as well.
And then on the, on the second bullet, can you just, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding what that's saying.
So in the study, it specifically pointed out that the, this was more significant with Hispanic and African-American girls, they had a greater risk with the, with lower reading skills than those that identified them as white. So if you look at just your lower readers, black teenagers and Hispanic teenagers had a higher risk factor of becoming pregnancy, even if they were all at the same literacy rate, with their white counterparts.
Okay, okay, that, that helps me. And so one of the, when I was just searching, as I often do, so I came across some studies on the CDC website, and they also had some indicators, they dealt with grades. So one of the charts they had was sexual behaviors and academic grades. This was from a twenty-fifteen National Youth Risk Behavior Study, and it showed that students with higher academic grades are less likely to be currently sexually active, or to have drunk alcohol, or used drugs before their last sexual intercourse, and are more likely to have used a condom the last time that they had sexual intercourse, and there's several charts that they have there that, in essence, because they even broke it down by A, B, C's, D's and F's, however that's determined, but I guess there's some, they said it's not causation, but there's something where we're seeing where students who are performing better with literacy, and doing better with their grades, are least likely to find their pregnancy rates, or drug use, or other, I don't know what the proper term is, risky behavior, whatever you want to call it, that the more literate you are, and the better the grades you are, the less likely that you're engaging in risky behavior, I guess is the way it's used to be said. So just to get personal for a moment, so I'm a father of two daughters, both graduates of Norfolk Public So I'm a father of two daughters, both graduates of Norfolk Public Schools. As a parent, when the family life came up, I opted my children out. And I opted them out, one because I started talking to my children about reproduction and their bodies and male bodies, probably when they were four, five and six years old, which I think was about the same time that my father bought me the book, Where Do Children Come From?, and said, go read this. My mother gave some additional balance, but you know, that's what I, I remember. And the book may still be in the drawer in the, in the bathroom that my brother and I shared. But part of the reason that my wife and I talked about it was, one, I do believe, so I, I tend to be more libertarian than many. I, I don't like the government dictating everything, whether it's the neighborhood that I live or anything else. I just, I think that our democracy is stronger with a responsive government that is limited. But, but I do believe that government has a role, and I believe it has a role in public education. Part of the thing for, for me was more than just talking about sex. It was talking about what our family morals may have been, what our religious beliefs were. And so I thought that it was important to have more than just the sex conversation. Now, I think when they got into high school, like, I can't remember, I don't think I opted them out of high school, but at elementary school level, I just felt that, middle, they were at Gant, so it was the K-8 model, that, that I just felt that if somebody was going to teach my children about some of these topics, I felt that I was prepared to do that. Or if I wasn't prepared to do that, I knew I could go to Dr. Vicentessen, and Dr. Vicentessen would help me have that, because that's the pediatrician, could help and have me, help me have that conversation. What I'm in part concerned about, well, let me ask this question. In those three options, is opt-in and opt-out also an option?
So the, I, I, I pulled the exact language up here. Let me get to the right slide. So on the third bullet there, the exact language from the code says, parents and guardians also have the right to excuse their child from all or part of family life education instruction, which is the opt-out that we provide.
Right. And I get that, but does that then mean that if we do family life education, it's automatically opt-in?
Correct.
Okay. So you know, I'm, I'm some years away from when my daughters were in middle and high school. But the level of communication and the bombardment, I felt as a, as a parent, I think I had to be pretty well engaged to, to hear and listen and pay attention and focus on whenever anything came around opting out of anything. And for better, for worse, my children can speak to whether or not they were well-served or not, that they can make that determination. I, I think that we need to consider, and I, and I saw that in recommendations, but I like to see it spelled out even more. It's almost like when we do a lot of the surveys that we do. And the surveys, to me, are good surveys, but when we look at the results, they aren't always representative of, of our, of our district. And culturally, I think that for better, for worse, there's some parents who just trust the system. There are some parents like me that struggle, don't know what to do. There may be other parents who are on top of, on, on top of things. I do agree with my colleagues that, that parents can always opt-out. But I think as a division, as a board, it's not about the administration, I just mean public schools in general, but Norfolk in particular, can do a, I want us to be very intentional. I don't, I don't want us to just do what we just think works. So maybe in some of these focus groups of conversations around our goals around family and community engagement, that we're excellent at trying to make sure that parents fully understand, not just in this curriculum, but any curriculum, what's being offered. I do, I hear from parents all the time, and parents who are, who will call me or talk to students, and the students will say, I'm in ninth grade, but I'm not taking math. And I'll be like, what do you mean you're not taking math? And then when we start having conversations, often it's, well, I didn't know I could take this math, or the math I'm taking is basic math, not higher order math. So that, to me, is just something that we experience every day as we try to have our children aspire and reach the goals that they have. So I'm squeamish.
Now, can I respond to that, Mr. Jordan, real quick?
Sure.
So one of the things, when we first started talking about the Get Real curriculum that Mr. Brady, Mr. Person and I sat down and talked about was exactly what you're talking about, is the communications with opting out. So one of the things that we've done is we've reached out, Newport News uses this curriculum, so we wanted to see what they were doing. They've created individual lesson or letters for each and every lesson. So we've talked about the importance of increasing communications and the, the the accountability of a teacher to respond to a parent when they get the opt-out back. Because one of the other things we heard at the family or the community forums was a, a parent of a graduated student had said, I found out years afterwards that I signed the opt-out, but my child chose not to turn it in, so he went to the classes anyway. Well, one of the things that we want to do is we want to say when a teacher gets an opt-out form, they contact that parent back and saying, I've received the form. That way, there's a little bit more two-way communication going on, but that was a, a large part of the discussion, that when you have a curriculum change, like what we're proposing to the board, that we need to improve communications on what's going on. So we've already started that process and started designing what it can be and realized that this is a, this is taught April main timeframe. Our letters are just now going out for this spring's family life education right now, which uses the old curriculum, by the way, if anybody's listening, it's not using the new curriculum.
Say that again, say that again, please. Thank you.
It's posted onsite, in the libraries, everywhere, always has been. But we knew that we'd be spending the good part of the beginning and next year working with media communications, even trying to devise maybe some different tools where they could do a response to a text, you know, that's real quick and easy, opt-in, opt-out. You know, how can we do something like that that's simpler? Because we knew the importance of communicating this and getting those forms back.
On that point, and then I'll, one more and I'll be done. On the, on the new, oh, I didn't know, you didn't have your hands up, so I, I apologize.
Have the floor.
No, I, I apologize, but it is, it, it, it.
All right, go ahead with your point.
On the Newport News side, they do the Get Real for high school. Don't they do something different for middle school?
It, it, they do, I, I believe they do Get Real for middle and high school. The thing Newport News does differently, though, is they actually hire additional PE teachers. And those PE teachers go from school to school to school, so there's consistency across. So if the board wants to allocate us more PE teachers, we're happy for that. But you know, that's one of the things they do for consistency. I, I would have to double check, but I believe when we talk to them, they use it for their secondary curriculum as well.
Then I just have one last question. On the, on the communication strategy in, in our options, is there, does it hinder the, the, the recommendation if the communication strategy is brought to us prior to or aligned with our action on, on the implementation?
So yes, because of the professional development side, you know, we want to make sure that with, that with any incoming teachers, that at the beginning of the year, before, before service even starts, that they are getting the professional development. They need to be prepared to teach this content. So I do believe it would hinder it, especially because we do really want to find something that's comprehensive enough and that's two-way, that there's verification that the opt-out was received. That's our goal.
So, so I, I share the goals of where we're trying to achieve. I am, I would like to err on the side of knowing that we're going to have a robust parent communication platform along, along with it. So I'll see where I'll be in two weeks, but I'm just sharing where I am.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, and thank you all for the time.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Oh, do you?
I'll just quickly say, I agree with everyone around the table. It's needed. Like Mr. Jordan, I did cringe a little bit, but I don't think we can over-communicate when we're, you know, communicating, communicating to our parents, especially about the opt-out option, because there are some parents who want their kids to be in, you know, go through family life. So yeah, just over-communicate. Parents, again, they're your children. You, you decide what's best for your family, your children, and you have the option to opt out of this curriculum if you choose to, so.
And we'll be doing both school-level and division-level communications to match as well.
It was up to me. We'll have billboards around the city, you know. But yeah, parents, you have the power and you can opt your children out of this curriculum if you choose to do so. So, thank you, Dr. Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. And round three for you.
Grab my water real quick.
Continuing, item 3.04, continuing the drive strategic plan update. So whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon again. Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Bert Song. I'm here now to provide an update on third-quarter grades, attendance, and chronic absenteeism. This data will cover third-quarter grades, attendance rates, and the trend data, rates by level and demographics, students who are at risk of being chronically absent, and students who are already chronically absent. Starting with a high-level overview of third-quarter grades, as seen on this graph, grades one and seven have seen a slight uptick, and grades nine, 10, and 12 have seen larger increases and are above the rate from last year for failing two or more classes, while grades two through six and 11 are all below the rates for last year. Looking at the same data by demographics, the data stayed level from students with disabilities and decreased for Asian students and had increases with other subgroups of students, with the largest increase in percentage of students failing two or more classes with the Hispanic student population. Included in the data on board docs is a report by grade and demographics as well as by school for students failing two or more classes. This slide goes into the attendance rates for elementary levels over the past four years. These percentages represent the total days of attendance for all students divided by the total number of days of possible. This rate averages all students together to get the average daily attendance. As seen in the data, every grade level has improved in average daily attendance as compared to last year. All grade levels are still a little below pre-pandemic levels for third quarter. Here is the same information for secondary grades, and all grade levels except for seventh and ninth grades have seen improvements from last year. And this graph shows the differences in attendance rates by level and by demographics. And as a reminder, this is not trend data, it's just the, the broken-down data by level for quarter-three demographics. Here, we see the percentage of students in each grade level that have exceeded a 10% absentee rate through quarter-three of last year, with the orange bars being through quarter-three of this year, or sorry, the orange bars are last year and the red bars are this year. This data takes the attendance by student and does not average out all students' attendance. So that's the difference between average daily attendance and chronic absentee rates. The shaded areas are the bands for accreditation. Schools are level one if below 15% are absent 10% of the more days possible or chronically absent, and two, level two, if they're 15 to 25%, and level three, if they're more than 25% chronically absent. And then again, included in board docs for your review is this breakdown of percentage by school with all three quarters represented on the document. This is the same data by demographics and the rest of the demographics. This slide shows the percentage of students in each grade level that are already chronically absent for the year, meaning they've already missed 17 or more days of school. Grades one through six have seen decreases from this time last year. The rest have seen some increases. This is the same data broken down by demographics, and you'll see here our black population, our students with disabilities, and our low-income population are above the line. Included with this presentation is the estimated chronic absentee rates by school, the students failing two or more classes by grade level and demographics, as well as the students failing two or more classes by school. At this time, we're ready for any questions or discussion you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Let's go first.
I, I will. Maybe it's more directed to the board and, and our work that we've been doing, and maybe even tying back to the conversation we just had. I think as we continue to support the administration on literacy and numeracy and achieving goals, we will positively impact student outcomes, accreditation, and according to research, lower risky behavior. And I think that's where our focus and attention should be. I do have a question. I was watching the, I think it was the last state board meeting, and it seemed, if I understood the actual direction that they're going as far as chronic absenteeism as it impacts school accreditation, they're moving away from having a grace period, longer grace period, and are going to have chronic absenteeism be a part of the accreditation system. With that being considered, can you just kind of give a sense of where we are in the third quarter? What that might mean for us, I'm not asking for exact numbers, but what that might mean for us? And then also, I know that in many of the SMART goals for the, that the schools had there in the comprehensive improvement system, they also had, many of them had targets around chronic absenteeism. Can you give us a sense as to whether or not most are on target, ahead of the game, or, or, or behind?
So a couple of things about that. One, you heard correctly. The board was asked to consider removing chronic absenteeism, the state board, from accreditation because really it's seen as almost a double indicator, because when they're absent, they're probably not going to be successful. So that is correct. So the board voted that down, so that is back on accreditation this year. The other thing that I think it's important to know is this year, there's no three-year average with chronic absenteeism. That's a very important data point to know. Prior to the pandemic, just like with all the other data points, you have a three-year average because you could have a year at a school, at any school, that something could happen to spike or drop data. So this year, the data on the left part of this slide, which was included in, in the upload, is the chronic absenteeism by quarter. And really, when you're over 25%, which these, the, the schools in red are at risk of right now, they're not there. It's, they're at risk of that right now, and I'll let you know this too, or else Dr. Kimsey might throw something at me. We're stalled, this was also, I pulled this data right at the end of the quarter, so it's consistent. So it hasn't necessarily been cleaned for the week prior or anything like that. So the, the principals will always call Dr.
So it hasn't necessarily been cleaned for the week prior or anything like that, so the, the principals will always call Dr. Kimzy and say, Paul's got the data wrong again, my attendance is better. I'd rather focus on what I know might be worst-case scenario than best-case scenario, right? So the sheet you see here, when they're in red, that one indicator could cause a school to be accredited with conditions. That one indicator, one year worth of data. That's what the Commonwealth Board decided in that vote. So, Mr. Jordan, I think the best way to say is that one sheet is the, is the best tracking we have right now. As far as, I, I wouldn't be able to answer the specific school goals if they're meeting them or not, but, look, you know, I try to make them as colorful as I can. I'd, I'd like to see more green on this. I think we all would. But this is the, the, kind of the viewpoint of where we are right now.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And, and you, you said it, but I wanted to make sure, because you, first you said the board voted it down, and then you came back and you said, and that's, so this is Governor Youngkin's school board?
The state board, yeah.
The Commonwealth Board of Education.
Governor Youngkin's school board that he appointed.
The state board.
Yeah, Department of Education.
He appointed, so.
It's not, not quite yet. He's still?
He's still trying. Well, my thing is, is just, there's an overall arching, and I'll continue to say here, there's an attack on public education. And when you look at some of these things here, I appreciate the work that's, that's happening here, but we can't be blind to the fact that there is concerted efforts on certain things to not move things out of the way. I mean, we, we, we're still coming out of, coming out of this pandemic and we're looking at absenteeism, and still trying to find where a lot of our students are, and we even saw the data when we were talking about the, about our ed planning, you know, that there is a decline across. I don't, I, I just, I appreciate what's happening here, but, and I appreciate for those who are watching in, in our school buildings, because I know, and we've also put it in the budget, to put for more attendance technicians to support and identify where these students are. If they're not in the classroom, we're even looking at potential changes to our policy when it talks about when we have to deal with disciplinary issues, and students are not in the classroom, still providing them educational opportunities. We're working, and I, and I see that, and I want to make sure that that's acknowledged.
Thank you.
Your hand up? Are you just holding your pens?
No, sorry, it is up. Yeah, and, you know, I honestly, I, I almost, you know, I feel like a broken record, and you probably could guess the questions I'm going to ask, and I know we're probably all kind of, kind of burned out on seeing similar data, you know, quarter after quarter. And so it's, I guess in my mind, I'm now like thinking about overlapping with topics, like we're going to talk about the summer programming and then talking about, so let's talk as a board and, and as a team, like, so what can we expect to see? Like, like, let's like now talk about, okay, like, like, like a team, like, how are we moving this forward? Like, you know, as a chief academic officer, like, what do you, you, you know, what do you see here with this data that we can actually do? What are some high-leverage areas? Yeah, what are some high-leverage areas? And unfortunately, with chronic absenteeism, and the thing that bothers me is that it's, yes, it's an, it's an, a highly important area or indicator correlated with academic success, but it is an indicator that is not a school-based factor that we can really control.
I'll have total control.
So it's really difficult for us to say we're going to do X, Y, and Z to manage this issue, because, and, you know, I've sat with some principals to show me exactly how complicated it is, because they know I, they've heard me in meetings asking so many questions about it. So let me actually show you how complicated it is. And so I have a new kind of respect for how complicated that is. But, I guess back to, you know, this whole picture with, you know, the number of students failing two or more classes, and some of these percentages just really, you know, it just seems like we're really not moving the needle very much, you know, quarter to quarter, and we've been seeing it, you know, over the last couple of years, and, you know, and then we have the chronic absenteeism data, so it's like, what's our, what's our game plan, you know? You know, we have the summer programming coming up. How do we monitor this? We have investments with the attendance technicians, like, what is, you know, what should we expect to see? Are the, you know, the attendance technicians are just doing what we hope they can do with what little influence they actually have, you know, because so much of it is external, you know, to us. But with the, with grades, you know, the same schools where we see the high percentages are the same schools where we see, you know, the challenges with literacy and numeracy. And then we have, you know, I wish we could talk about the summer, like, talk about the summer programs and say, okay, so we have these summer programs here. So can we talk about it and put up some targets? Like, so we saw, could, so those students, for instance, that we found here that may be failing two or more classes, how do we get them? We can't necessarily say you will be enrolled in these classes and we're going to see.
Do our best.
We do our best, but right now, it's my understanding that some of those students that are failing two or more classes, they have the opportunity to get credit or get passing grades, correct? Is that, or is it just only in credit-bearing classes?
Well, at your high school level and.
Yeah, and that's just high school.
Well, and middle, middle school level too, there, there, they have opportunities now. You know, we did put in place, you know, when we replaced grad point with EdMenum courseware, we were able to use that across the division in all levels, so we've done professional development on that, where a teacher's able to, right after a unit assessment, say a student wasn't successful in these few areas, go back and assign those few areas through EdMenum, work with them on that, and then pull their grades up. So actions like that are happening. But the other piece of the puzzle, what you pointed out, is they also have to be in school to be able to, to complete that work. So it, it, it's a difficult task. However, we, we've put, we've put items in place to support, support the task, you know, with, with the, the way to, to cycle students back during the school year, not waiting till the end of the school year and, and do a summer program, and, and the attendance techs who are trying to track down and find the students and make sure they're coming to school. The communications even with the courts and doing petitions if students are out too much, we're increasing those levels as well for parental accountability on that too.
Additional funds for teachers to stay back with children so they can recover some classes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, there must be a correlation for a lot of the children who are chronically absent and also missing two, or also failing two or more classes, and I'm wondering if we're, we could do more to meet these children where they are. So if they're not in school, they're not in, in the, at the, in the seat, so they're not learning. But if there's a way that we could train teachers to, you know, they, I mean, because every child has a device, right? So if there's a way that when they're not in school, that they could be contacted to, to get that curriculum remotely, and have some kind of follow-up, like they're identified, you weren't in school today, you missed the, missed it, now here's your opportunity, and if you have any questions, you know, I can coach you through this.
So with their, I mean, we have a two-pronged answer to that. With suspensions, if a student did something and they were suspended from school, we can do that. We, and we do do that. So if the student, when they're given their work, whether it be Canvas or a packet of work, if they communicate with the teacher and there, there's instruction going on during that timeframe, they, they can, the chronic absenteeism part, those days are considered instructional days for students. Now, the other piece of that is for students who are just, who, who may be just absent. We, we can't, for chronic absenteeism, that we can't, we can't credit them even if they're doing work unless they're ill. If they're ill, we can still do that, and we do do that. So if a student has COVID, has the flu, maybe had minor surgery, needs to be home for a week, if we give them the week's worth of work and the student is in contact with the teacher, emailing and turning in assignments, we can credit them for their attendance, and then, of course, they're keeping up with their work at the same time. However, if a student is just not in school, and even if they're doing their work and we're getting them to keep up with the grades, the absenteeism part is still, there's, we have no control over that at that point, if that makes sense. But so we do, we do have items in place. We use Canvas, our learning management system, to be able to assign work in instances like that, and to do teacher communication so that we can have students who may not be in school still, still learning. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
So what is?
As long as they're meaningfully engaged.
Correct.
Which is a very loose term, but it's one that the VDO uses, so.
But I see your, I see your, I see what your thought process, so.
Yeah, we need to reengage them.
Correct.
Exactly.
Which is what our attendance techs are trying to do to bring them back, which is even our teachers with calling home, contacting parents, trying to keep them engaged. And that is happening across the division. As far as being able to, let's just say back in, you know, when we were coming back from COVID, you remember we did our hybrid classrooms that were both live in person for half the class and online for half the class? Those are very difficult tasks for our teachers.
It was very difficult, but it's what we had to do at the time, and I wouldn't suggest that, but it just seems that, that we, I would like to see more evaluation around these two issues, because they seem to be interconnected, and there seems to be something there that we're missing. And, 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 you know, respecting the fact that, yeah, there is a limit to what we can do, because obviously, we're not going to pull them out of bed and brush their teeth for them.
Although we've done that.
Yeah. So I just would like, if there's any models out there that could be, you know, if you guys could, could look at this a little differently, and, and see if there's a way that we can kind of break the mold of the traditional classroom to reengage these students.
About that later, in a couple of minutes. I said we're about to hear about that in a couple of minutes.
And our summer program too. You'll hear a little bit about what we do with our summer high school program as well.
Hybrid model.
Correct.
Do you have something else?
Well, I have a follow-up question to that. So with the attendance technicians, are they collecting, when they're talking to students and families or parents and caregivers, are they recording some of the reasons for why they're, they're not in school, and maybe can we take a look at some of those reasons and, you know, look at our supports, and do we have the appropriate supports in place?
So I'm.
Like, you know?
I know, I know they're collecting the data.
Right.
And I'm sure Ms. Almond and, and Ms. Hamlin and Dr. Kimzy and, and everybody is also looking at that data, because as you know, also this year, we, we had a real comprehensive division-wide committee focused on attendance as well, that included principals and division-level folks, so I'm sure that'll be a, a data point that we're looking at on what better supports can we have around attendance and, and grades. Which are hand-in-hand, Dr. Martin, like you said, they, absolutely.
Right, because, because one of the, one of the things is like, let's say during COVID that a lot of students started working, and they, I'm just talking about high school right now, and maybe their work schedules and earning money became priority, or was just, you know, you know, or even the work they were doing was interesting and relevant, or, you know, they found it that maybe, you know, a non-traditional schooling option is
And you're going to hear about that.
Which I know we're going to hear about, which is what I'm leading, leading into.
That's why a lot of our children are there.
We have, we have one thing before we do a different campus. But maybe that's why we would then know whether, should we expand a program like Open Campus, or, you know, I think that would be important to know, so.
Nope, I'm going to keep it moving.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Paul.
You still here? Okay.
Yeah, this is round three for him. NPS, item 3.05, NPS 2023, Summer Innovation and Basic Skills Programs.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, Dr. Bert Song. I'm here again to share an overview now of our summer of 2023 programs for across the division. This summer, the Summer Stars program, where successful thinkers are ready students. There will be several opportunities for content-specific learning, as well as enrichment programming to meet the needs of all of our students. In an effort to continue offering as many programs as close to home as possible, there will be elementary programming in 16 of our sites, and the sites with multiple schools will be hosted at the school that's in bold font. So the students who are zoned for Sewell's Point and Taylor Elementary Schools will attend Summer Stars programming at Camp Allen Elementary School. Programming for the pre-K to grade-five grades include the Early Childhood Special Education Program, a four-year-old summer literacy camp for any of our, our students who currently completed pre-K4, Summer Stars, which was formerly called Basic Skills Programming, a Behavior and Social Skills Support Program, as well as a cross-categorical program for students with disabilities that qualify for extended school-year services. Camp Einstein, Getting Ready for Pre-Algebra VI for rising sixth-grade students. The Summer Arts Academy, the Green STEM Experience, and our English Learner Newcomer Program will all be opportunities for our elementary school students this summer. Middle school students will be attending classes within the six sites listed on this slide. Again, the combined slides are at the Bold Face School. An NPS middle school students will have Summer Stars programming, the cross-categorical programming, Getting Ready for Pre-Algebra and Algebra, Junior University, Health and PE, Summer Arts, Green STEM Summer Experience, and the Middle School English Learner Newcomer Program will be options for our middle schoolers. And as was successfully offered last year, our in-person summer school program will be a hybrid program with students attending in-person two days a week and live, online, the other two days a week. Granby High School will host our summer programs with Granby and Maury attending in-person on Monday and Tuesday, while Norview, Booker T. Washington, and Lake Taylor will, will attend in-person on Wednesday and Thursday of each week. High school students will have the Summer Stars program, which will house students who were unsuccessful in a course during the regular school year. Any student who wishes to take a course for an initial credit will be doing so through Virtual Virginia's online program. There will also be virtual credit recovery options for students with teacher assistance provided daily to those students. Two programs for students with disabilities who qualify for extended school years focused on postgraduate career development or cross-categorical programs. There's also going to be a continuation of the Advanced Placement Summer Academies we had last year to prepare students for upcoming AP classes. A credential boot camp for students who are eligible to take credential exams. Work-based learning opportunities, a summer ISAT program for students seeking their GED, as well as continued offerings at Open Campus. As with last year, NPS is partnering with United Way to offer extended learning for Chesterfield, J. Cox, PB Young, Ruffner, and Tidewater Park students through the LEAP program. And for students at Coleman Place, Ingleside, J. Cox, Monroe, St. Helena Suburban Park, and Norview Middle School, the 21st Century Learning Center grants will provide for additional learning activities. Here are the enrollment trends for the past five years, as well as projections for this summer. And as with last summer, all of the programs are free, let me say that one more time, all of the programs are free to Norfolk Public School students, thanks to our SO funding, and the applications for the variety offerings are open until May 15th. And information went out the week after summer school on that, I believe, or the week after spring break. I'm way ahead of myself there. Thank you for allowing me the time to present on summer programs, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I know you said free several times. Virtual Virginia, is that free?
Yeah, we're, we're covering the cost of Virtual Virginia initial credit courses as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Flannan.
Great, thank you. I'm excited to hear about this program again. My nephew will be graduating a year early, because he took advantage of these summer opportunities, and so he's decided he wants to be a merchant marine, so, you know, but appreciate on that one. I just wanted to go to your chart on enrollment. You showed in 2022, we had 5,182 students, but you're projecting for 2023, 8,960. What's the, I know it's a, it's a significant increase, so what are we doing to ensure that we reach those targets?
So, you know, a, a part of that increase is due to the data we just saw, with the amount of students, especially in our high schools, that are failing two or more classes. Really trying to encourage them to attend summer school, so the projection is based off what we funded the staff, the summer school programs. I would like to break that if we can. However, we are encouraging parents to sign up because, whether it's enrichment or the Summer Stars program for students who need a little bit more academic supports. We want to see that nearly 9,000 number be hit, so we've worked with counselors, we continue to work with counselors. We're getting, we've met with secondary principals as well, and we're going to meet with the specific principals of the sites. of the sites to talk about enrollment procedures. The enrollment process this year is, is very easy. It's broken down into four applications where the parent has access to all of them. They click they want they want, and it organizes all our data for us, and our wonderful SIS team is all ready to put them in synergy.
Great, thank you.
My plug.
Go ahead, Mrs. Flannan.
So about how much SOR funding is going towards all the summer programs, do you happen to know?
Uh, so we have budgeted around 2.5 million for this summer, and, and that's a, a round number. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it is, you know, we want to cover every cost that we can because we want our students to be here. And, yeah, that, that's approximately where it is.
Okay, and, um, thank you. So in developing these different programs, so I'm assuming that in, in determining the number, this 8,000, nine, oh, hold on, let me put my, 8,000, almost 9,000 students that you hope to enroll, I'm assuming that you used the, the academic data we just looked at, and you're probably looking at STAR data and, right?
So we used our academic data, and we also used historical enrollments for the enrichment programs as well.
For the enrichment, okay. So with that, are you, and I know this has come up in previous conversations that we've had, do you have like benchmarks that you're, that you're setting for the spring and then looking at and setting targets of where you want the kids to, you know, how, like, how you, what growth targets that you're setting for the fall for those students? And what, how can we monitor that as well so that we know what return on investment?
So this year.
With this funding and also how our students, you know, because if these programs are working, like right now, we're using SOR funding, but in the future, it might even help us, help inform whether, you know, I know some people will gasp, but if we were to even think about year-round schooling, some sort of model, or even continuing with the summer programs like we are right now, that will then eventually have to be in our operating budget. So that's why I asked for how much we're spending on these summer programs. I think that's important information as the main goal of these programs is, is, you know, that we want to move kids, move the needle for the students, so.
So the students who are in grades three through eight, we're gonna use data from their spring SOL to their fall through assessment.
Okay.
So we will use that to look at the, the students in the Stars Program who might have had some challenges academically to see if there's any growth in, in their vertical scaled score. Because as you remember from an earlier presentation, the vertical scale scores are connected now by grade level, so we'll be able to use the spring-to-fall vertical scale score for that. The students who are enrichment program-based, we're also gonna look at their scores for summer slide, when you look at reading, you know, literacy in, in particular, and, and looking at, you know, little to no summer slide for students who are involved, you know, in, in, in at least the enrichment program. Because summer slide is a real thing, where students will lose some reading levels between the spring and the fall when they return. So those are the data points for those grade levels. For our high school students, our data points are gonna be credits earned to make sure that they're successfully working towards their graduation goals.
Go ahead, Ms., Ms. Buffalo, and then I'll go back to you, okay?
Okay. I like seeing all this activity going on this summer. My only question is, are you seeing any staffing issues?
Never.
So we meet every other week as a, as a committee that works on summer school, and that's a standing agenda item. We had challenges last summer, and to be honest, the reason why we moved all of our initial credits for high school courses into Virtual Virginia was because of staffing issues we had last summer. We wanted to make sure that we had in-person live instructions for students who were struggling versus the, the students who were going for that. I wanna, you know, I wanna take geometry before I get into the school year, you know, I wanna get ahead on something.
Goodness.
Because those students are gonna be a little bit more successful in a virtual atmosphere. So we're trying to curtail that with some of the smaller changes we've made, but my anticipation is we'll, we'll probably see some, some staffing concerns. You'll see some of our programs, like some of the summer programming ends a week earlier than the Summer Stars Program to help with that as well, to make sure that we can, you know, that the teachers also know that they're starting a week earlier next year. So all of that together is, is, you know, we've been considering that, how, how we moved, moved to Open.
Just to piggyback off that, how are you using our, our volunteers? Are, are you using, not to teach, obviously, but in other ways to kind of fill in with the summer school programs?
So, yeah, I mean, the, the volunteers, we still reach out to them to, to, to work there or to assist, not, like you said, not to teach, but for summer reading or, or different items like that to come in to help enforce, you know, just good behavior around reading and literacy itself. Also with the LEAP program and the 21st Century Grants, they'll reach out as well and, and participate in the programs.
Aseem, do you wanna ask a question?
Um, I was just, this was more not a question, but a comment for board leadership was, was really, why'd you turn?
I was just checking.
Oh, I was like, I'm talking to you, no. Was that when we, you know, I think it's something that in the future for an agenda topic, I think it's, it would be good to kind of keep that in mind, that when we wrap up and kind of come back to see how our kids, our students performed this summer, is to look at this data, that we come back to the board and show us exactly what the impact of our summer programs are.
How it ties in with first quarter.
How it ties in, yeah. Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Paul.
I'll see you in a couple minutes.
All right, up next we have item 2.06, Open Campus Update with Dr. Kimzy.
You're saying that.
Come down. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, whatever you're ready.
So, good evening, School Board Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. I have the pleasure of providing you this evening with an update on the Open Campus High School Program. I'm going to begin with some context, and forgive me if you know all of this, but it helps paint the picture for Open Campus. The Bridgescape Learning Academy in partnership with NPS began in summer 2014. The program was a partnership between Edison Learning and Norfolk Public Schools. The program was originally designed to enable students who had already dropped out of high school to return and earn their high school diplomas while allowing some very limited enrollment for overage-for-grade students. Or students who had already almost earned enough credits for graduation but who had encountered challenges as they neared graduation. The program continued as a partnership until 2017, when Open Campus shifted to a program operated and funded fully by Norfolk Public Schools. However, prior to that transition to full NPS operation, on October 21st, 2015, the Center for Educational Partnerships at Old Dominion University presented to the school board its findings from a formative evaluation they had conducted of the program after its first year of operation. In that report and presentation, the center made six recommendations, including targeting recruitment and retention efforts for recovery students who had dropped out, exploring supports for teachers who were teaching across multiple courses to students with a variety of ability levels, enhancing peer-to-peer instruction and interactive learning, providing professional development for teachers, and collaborative planning and instruction, and developing a process for identifying and referring potential students who would benefit from enrollment at Open Campus. The next year and prior to the transition to full NPS operation in the fall of 2016, the District Management Council conducted a program evaluation of all alternative learning programming in NPS, including the programming at Open Campus. The Alternative School and Services Opportunity Review Preliminary Highlights for Discussion Written Report dated December 16th, 2016, and subsequently shared in a presentation to the school board on January 4th, 2017, included recommendations for improving student outcomes at Open Campus. Those recommendations included tailoring the program to meet students' individual learning needs, providing coaching support to core classroom teachers, ensuring direct instruction and support to students, expanding social-emotional supports for students, and implementing a multi-tiered system of supports known as MTSS for students. At the time of the program evaluation, the primary instructional model at Open Campus consisted of what the program termed blended learning. However, students at Bridgcape spent the majority of their time working independently with some support from teachers who were not necessarily certified in, in that exact core content area in which the student was working during only one class period per day. In addition, students attended school in-person, daily choosing one of two or more half-day session programs, programming options. During this presentation, and thank you for your patience as I went through all that, during this presentation, I will share how Open Campus has now shifted its focus from one mainly of recovery to one focus, of focused prevention to open, open to all students through working in close collaboration with the five high schools, along with other alternative sites in NPS, to proactively identify students for whom the traditional four-year high school setting does not meet those students' individual needs. This proactive collaborative approach included the development of the NPS On-Time Graduation Team during the 2020-2021 school year. This team consists of the five high school principals, the alternative site coordinator for Open Campus, who's actually sitting in our audience this evening, and the site coordinator for Madison, the principal at Net Academy, all high school graduation coaches, and representatives from the Assessment, Research, and Accountability, CTE, and Learning Support Departments. The team works to support schools in identifying students who may benefit from alternative programs, like Open Campus among others, and ensures that students receive appropriate supports before they might choose to drop out of high school. In this presentation, I will also share the transformation of the instructional model at Open Campus, including the professional development support provided to teachers in that model's implementation, along with other flexibilities and supports that have been developed to support students in reaching the goal of graduation. Students are usually enrolled in three online courses through the CourseWare platform at a time, though this varies as well depending upon the student's academic and social emotional needs. Hold on. I'm sorry, I'm backwards. Okay, somehow, I'm so sorry. Okay. At Open Campus, students earn course credit through the Edmentum CourseWare online platform while receiving intensive direct instructional support from content area certified teachers. Since the onset of the pandemic, Open Campus has transformed its instructional delivery model, which I will explore in more detail later in this presentation. And the program has increased the flexibility for students attending the program. The program now allows for both in-person and virtual instructional support and for individualized scheduling for students without the daily half-day in-person attendance requirement. The staff at Open Campus includes one English, one math, one science, one social studies teacher, and a special education teacher, a school counselor, and the site coordinator. Students usually come to the campus, campus at least twice per week for in-person check-ins with teachers and/or the counselor, though these are also conducted via Zoom based on students' needs and progress. Some students may even come to the campus every day, while a few may come only a few times per month, depending upon their own needs and challenges. As staff monitor students' progress, however, they do require that students who show signs of potential lack of expected progress to attend in-person until they're once again on track and meeting their individual progress goal checkpoints. Yeah, I really got this messed up. Okay. All right. When a student enrolls at Open Campus, the staff meets with the student and family to develop the student's individual learning plan with input from the student's home high school based upon the student's progress so far toward graduation. The plan is developed back with, using backwards design with clear timelines for completion of individual courses, SOL tests, CPR, first aid, et cetera, so that the student, if possible, will reach the end goal of graduation with their peer cohort from their home high school. The template for this individual learning plan was completely redesigned by Ms. Cook and her team during the 21-22 school year to ensure an emphasis upon proactive, individualized support. Part of the plan development also includes determining the frequency for the in-person progress goal check-ins for the student. Instead of assigning students to specific sessions to attend every day, as was the previous model in the program, allowing again for that individualized flexibility and support to students. So the mini lesson difference. The instructional focus at Open Campus has shifted to providing targeted, direct instruction to students when support is needed in real time. Direct instruction is provided to the student based on each student's daily progress through the online modules in the Edmentum CourseWare platform, with teachers using students' previous performance on state and local assessments, along with the student's performance in the modules, to develop individualized daily mini lesson plans for direct instruction. Mini lessons are designed to last 10 to 20 minutes, allowing students to then immediately practice using the skills and content they have just learned as they progress through the CourseWare module. The mini lesson framework for providing direct instruction was developed and implemented at Open Campus during the 21-22 school year. This development effort involved the staff's close work with the curriculum and instruction team, including the secondary senior coordinators for math and English, along with the senior coordinators of science and social studies. Additionally, a learning support specialist and senior coordinator also collaborated on the development of the framework, focusing on helping the special education teacher develop and implement appropriate specially-designed instruction. The CNI and learning support teams developed the mini lesson template based upon that collaboration, and they provided individualized coaching support to the content and special education teachers during the 21-22 school year for initial implementation, and that support continues now. This daily instructional model allows for individualized instruction that reduces students' frustration through chunking concepts and skills and ensures students' continued progress toward the ultimate goal of earning that high school diploma. Please note that for some students who have returned to school after having dropped out for a period of time, graduating with their original cohort may not be possible. However, the staff make every effort to support students in meeting that goal while using this model. So why Open Campus? Due to the ongoing transformation at Open Campus from a reactive recovery approach after students drop out or significantly overage for grade to a proactive approach in supporting earning their diplomas, Open Campus now enrolls students for a variety of reasons. For example, some students may be experiencing family challenges wherein they may need to help care for family members or their own children during traditional school hours. Additionally, especially as a result of the pandemic, more students now must work to help support their families during the traditional school day. So the flexibility Open Campus affords them allows them to support their families while also earning their diplomas. Furthermore, some students may want to finish high school at an accelerated pace for a variety of reasons. Other students may crave a smaller setting as anxiety around being in a large, traditional four-year high school has prevented their regular attendance at their home high school. high school has prevented their regular attendance at their home high school. Importantly, while our focus has shifted to a proactive approach, Open Campus does continue to enroll students who may have stopped attending or have dropped out of their home high schools, as well as supporting students who may be overage for grade. So let's look at some data. As seen here, shifting to a proactive approach, allowing for flexibility using Zoom, and providing individualized direct instruction has resulted in almost doubling of enrollment since 2019-2020. Please note that Open Campus continues to enroll students now through the fourth quarter of the school year, so the current enrollment, as of April 24th, 2023, of 105 students, as denoted here, will continue to grow through the end of the school year. In addition, Open Campus will continue providing instruction during the summer, as Dr. Poehl mentioned, to help projected summer graduates reach the graduation finish line by our August commencement ceremony. This slide notes the demographic breakdown by percentage of students enrolled at Open Campus for the last four school years. The number in parentheses represents the total number of students enrolled. Please note again, Open Campus continues to enroll, so that number is going to change. Here you see the enrollment trends broken down by students with disabilities, SES, and English learners. Please note that a student may qualify for more than one category. So for example, one student may be both a student with a disability and an English learner. The numbers in parentheses again indicate the total enrollment for that school year. Again, Open Campus continues to enroll students, so these percentages will continue to fluctuate. Here you can see enrollment by gender, again remembering that the numbers are going to fluctuate this year. As represented here, Open Campus has historically had more males than females enrolled, though an approximately 10 percentage point increase in female student enrollment is noted between 1920 and 2223. Through its transformation from a reactive approach to a proactive one, Open Campus has been transforming into a program that meets the needs of our students who may struggle to progress, as I said, in a traditional four-year high school. Even with the onset of the pandemic, as the following slides will show, Open Campus has been able to increase the number of positive student outcomes each school year while significantly decreasing the number of students dropping out from its program, all while doubling, almost doubling, its enrollment. These positive trends are attributable to the shift from a reactive recovery approach to providing proactive intervention and supports, which include implementation of division-wise systemic collaboration, the beginning implementation of MTSS, providing individualized instructional, social, emotional supports for students, and the development of the mini lesson direct instructional framework. Unlike a traditional high school, at Open Campus, students are not assigned a traditional grade level. They progress fluidly through school on an individualized plan using online, using the online CourseWare platform, so that's important also to note. Additionally, the program's smaller setting allows staff and students to forge strong working relationships. And students also maintain their close connection to their home high schools, even participating in events like the prom, and of course proudly participating with their peers in their home high school commencement ceremonies. Here you'll note the significant decrease in the number of students who have dropped out of Open Campus after enrolling in the program. The number in parentheses indicates the total number of students enrolled that year. Note the significance decrease, the significant decrease in dropouts between 1819s and 1920s. Some of this decrease may be attributable to the increased flexibility around SOL-verified credits and other requirements that the VDOE afforded students due to the pandemic. Also, please note that the increase between the 2019-20 and 2020-21 school years may be partially attributed to not being able to have those in-person progress check-ins due to the pandemic. As we know, students benefit from in-person support, especially when they're struggling with content or coping socially emotionally. However, the 21-22 school year again continued downward, the downward trend in the percentage of students choosing to drop out from Open Campus. This significant decrease over time is attributable again to the shift from recovery to intervention, which includes implementation of all of those supports that I have mentioned before. So though we have much work to do, and we know that, to ensure that every NPS student graduates on time, ready for college and career, here you will note the significant increase in positive student outcomes for students enrolled at Open Campus. So as a reminder, as students, students at Open Campus progress fluidly through high school, with progression at times accelerating and at times slowing based on the student's individual learning and social-emotional needs. Here I've noted the percentage of students who have met traditional high school growth standards within the pandemic year, also known as meeting promotional requirements. Though again, students progress at Open Campus is, students' progress is fluid based on their needs. For example, the first year a student is enrolled at Open Campus, the student may only progress through two courses due to perhaps significant family challenges, while the following year, that same student may progress through the traditional high school equivalent of two years' worth of coursework or 10 courses toward earning a diploma. On this chart, we can clearly see the positive student outcomes such as earning a diploma or a GED, when earning a diploma becomes out of reach, and making progress at a traditional high school rate of completing five or more courses in an academic year. And those have increased from 33.5% to 54.5% since 2015-16. And positive, oops, and outcomes have increased even during and after the pandemic, with 20.2 percentage point gains since 2018-19, and again increasing enrollments from 65 students in 1819 to 88 students during the 21-22 school year. So where do we go from here in order to continue to make significant progress for our high school students at Open Campus and in NPS overall? Moving toward an eventual alternative learning center by placing alternative programs like Madison and Open Campus at one location would allow us to provide more comprehensive instructional and social-emotional supports for students while efficiently maximizing staff. Furthermore, current Open Campus, currently, Open Campus uses two classrooms at the Norfolk Technical Center and has one room for office space. The program will need additional space to continue to grow its student enrollment. So this concludes my lengthy presentation. I am verbose, and I stand ready to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Quincy. Mr. Clanton, Ms. Bassin, and then Ms. Buffalo.
Great. Not more or less a question. I do want to recognize again Ms. Cook and the work. I'm going to recognize you. And the staff and team that is there. I remember when we were going into COVID and we were going through there, the dedication and commitment of that staff didn't stop. They literally did a drive-by presentation of their diplomas with balloons and those students there. But this is exactly what I think you were talking about, Dr. Martin. Looking at, and I'm glad to hear that we've made some adjustments, and I even enjoy hearing the recommendations because we're going to have to, when we look at Madison, we look at a lot of things in the conversations that have come up. We want to ensure that every child, regardless of their situation, that they have the same level and value that they're seeing if they were in a regular high school. And so to ensure that students can get those certifications, that GED, and make sure that they can go in and be valuable as a citizen is exciting to see. So to look at that data, to look at the reduction in dropouts, to see the increase in diplomas and GEDs. I'd also like to know, so are there certifications that are potentially coming out of that as well? Or when we say they're getting their diploma?
The certification would be in partnership with the Technical Center.
Okay, but we do have students that-
We work very closely with them.
Got it. So I, I can't say anything, I wouldn't say anything negative because this is something that I'm passionate about and seeing this here. For us to continue to look forward thinking as we do have these larger, broader discussions about how we can pull things in alignment to support all of our students. And I think when we look at that attendance, some of those situations that I think were coming out here, working and all those other things, will begin to manifest and kind of rise above to see that we have to do something different, think outside of the box with programs like this to address all the needs of our students, and of each student, and to think, you know, that traditional going to a school building and, you know, so, thank you. Appreciate it. That's it.
If, I'd like Mrs. Moore-Buffalo to go first, and I'll go last.
Okay, go ahead.
I have just two questions. Do we have or do we keep data on what high schools the students are coming from?
Yes, I do have that, and I could provide that to the board.
Yeah, I would like to see that. And also, one of the recommendations is physical space to continue the growth at Open Campus. Do we have a location in mind where we'd like to see these two?
Don't do that one. Don't do that.
Oh, should I not say? I mean, we really, we've been doing a lot of brainstorming, and I'm not saying we would be ready for next year. But I know if we're looking to get into a building fairly quickly, meaning not next year, but the next year for planning purposes, we have the Fair Lawn building that is still empty, and it's a viable building. We could potentially look at Fair Lawn as a site. Huh? I'm sorry. I meant Easton, thank you.
I was like, there's some kids in there. This is why I said, no, don't put it on the spot.
Been a long day. Easton, the Easton School. It's in a wonderful community. I think it would be a great location, and the building is just sitting there. And we haven't given it back to the city yet. We could certainly make good use of it. And so again, I haven't really flushed this out, flushed this out, but that's what we have been talking about since I've been put on the spot.
Does anybody else have any questions before? I mean, I feel like I should-
You're going to talk for a long time.
I feel like you're teeing up for some time.
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Well, you have the floor, Ms. Bassin. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much for the presentation, and Ms. Cook, thank you for being here. Ironically, before this was put back on the agenda, I had a great visit over there yesterday. So I got to see the students in action, the teachers in action, the whole staff in action, so it was great. And, you know, this, this program and this school is something I've been passionate about as well. And you've heard me say, we've got to reimagine high school and look at various ways that our students learn, want to learn, and be innovative in that process. So, you know, I know my colleagues have known that I've been asking for an update on Open Campus for a couple of years now because we haven't, I think since that ODU study or formative evaluation was done, we haven't come back to really take a good, hard look at how Open Campus is doing, how our students are doing there, and you know, how the, the program is doing and how we might strengthen, strengthen it or replicate it or whatever. So, so with that, a couple of questions I have. So it's good to see the student outcomes from, from that school because, you know, a lot of times we see the graduations, you know, they're, they're kind of, they blend in with their home schools, and we can't really see or, you know, it's hard to determine how students are performing there, what, what the next step is for the students that, that attend Open Campus. So I think it would be nice if we could, I guess my ask is that there be some sort of more regular monitoring for us in some way, regular monitoring meaning like we do with any of our other programs, at least at the end of the year, just as you provided to us today, to just kind of know, you know, how our students at Open Campus is, is doing. And to see the trend data has been really good. And one of the things I'm curious about is the number of students that attend Open Campus and how we've gone from a larger sample to a much smaller sample, and that may be due to physical constraints of the building or maybe other reasons. And I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit.
So I have to glean some of that from documents I found, conversations with Ms. Cook, who actually arrived as they made the transformation in 2017 to fully NPS. But as I shared in the context when I was reading through all, and that's what this is, those are all those reports and everything, I really read through all that when I first arrived in NPS. And they, their emphasis was really upon going out in the street and getting the kids who had already dropped out, and they had a specific place in mind. It was a charter-type school.
Right, right.
And so it was a different model.
Right.
And then when it, it, it didn't meet the, the outcomes they really wanted it to meet there at the beginning, it had a bit of a rough start, at least from what I can glean. Then NPS kind of went back to the table, went to Edison Learning, redid, you know, I read through where they redid those contract negotiations and everything. And then from there, it, it started to drop because with five staff members, and their emphasis really was on that dropout recovery. I read some things about, you know, challenges with student behaviors, some of those things that were occurring in those first couple of years. And so I have to just infer, there's nothing that I can find written as far as that. But Ms. Cook, if you'll notice at that trend data, she has worked hard since her arrival at increasing that enrollment. And I know we have really been with the creation of that On Time Graduation Team, it's a constant conversation, which kids can we get to Open Campus that's going to be the right fit for them?
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. The other second part of that is with the On Time Graduation Team. I heard, you know, the, at the time that Open Campus opened, you know, just as you explained, it was, it wasn't for, it wasn't meant to be a school where students who had disciplinary or for suspended students, so, and that is still the case.
Correct, no, this is a true just alternative option.
Non-traditional, right. Well, I heard Madison, I heard Madison being, so they're part, so it's like, once they leave Madison, they can come.
Some students may come to Open Campus, but lots of Madison students then transition back to their home high school.
Right, okay, and some do come here.
It's whatever is best for the student. The focus now is really as a team at the school level, and then we support that at the division level, looking at every single student holistically.
Okay.
What is best for that individual student to help support them in that transition and reaching that On Time Graduation goal.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be-
Yep. No, it is not at all a discipline.
Well, I know it's not, but I was just, I mean, I just wanted to be sure that, that wasn't the direction.
No, so let me clarify. And the recommendation, let me share a little bit about that so that that's very clear. They would still operate as completely separate programs. We even talked about building a wall in the middle so that there is no crossflow, and they would be on two separate schedules. As you know, Open Campus is more of a Twilight program. Kids come between 1:30 and 6:00, and the conversation would be to move Madison to that first stagger, which is the high school stagger, so they start school 7:20, and they're out by 2:05.
Anyone else?
Just, yeah, thank you for the work and appreciate all that's been done there. And my recommendation is, don't talk to us anymore about- my recommendation is, don't talk to us anymore about next steps until you're ready, so that we don't get in your mess.
Point heard. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Dr. Kinsey. And your encore performance on policy.
All right. Good afternoon one more time, or good evening, sorry.
Yeah.
And soon to be good night, right?
We're not prepared.
Tonight with policies, there, there are a few uploaded for you to review. EA Support Services, the entire policy has changed, just making it more, more broad and encompassing, and the legal references have also been updated. The ECABZ on vandalism, our policy was very close to VSBA, and we can remove the Z with the updates that are made. I mean, it does add an amount for damages of up to $2,500 for vandalism, which will help with our Chromebooks that, that might be damaged. The GCBEB military leave, this changes the notification from the supervisor to be the appropriate HR generalist who will then inform the supervisor. Also legally, the, the days change from 15 to 21 days paid for federally funded tour of duty. IIAE Innovative Experimental Programs, that's a current VSBA policy. We couldn't find it on our books, so it's just making sure that we have it on our books. And then GCB Professional Staff Contracts, no changes are being recommended, it's just the five-year review. However, we are updating the regulation to that one to match the policy language. And that, those are the updates for policy tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Just have one. On the, on the contracts policy, is there anything out there where school divisions are using electronic contracts? I noticed in this policy, again, says that the contracts will be available at the building. Is, is there anything out there that is more using electronic and digital technology for teacher contracts?
I really don't have an answer for that, Mr. Jordan. I'm sorry.
But Mr. Jordan, I can share with you, some divisions don't even issue contracts to teachers, that, a paper contract. It's, it's just, and Mr. Cloud would know more about that. Basically, our teachers are guaranteed, not guaranteed, that may not be the appropriate word right now, but Mr. Billups, do you want to better explain that?
And he can, he can do it later.
Okay, yeah, but, but there is, there are some districts who don't even utilize contracts, especially for their teacher corps, because it's almost implied that the teachers are going to get a contract unless they are on a plan of action and then recommended for termination and go through that process. Otherwise, it's assumed that you're going to get a contract for the next year, kind of like a continuing contract, it's implied, so they don't have paper contracts.
So, so whatever, all that great things that you just shared, I guess the, the main thing for me is if the, if there's an opportunity to-
Use less paper.
Use less paper.
Kill less trees.
Kill less trees and lessen, if there is a burden on the school campuses, then we just consider that and not necessarily put something in the policy that kind of forces something that may inhibit the innovation. So that's, that's all.
But they got to opt out rather than opt in.
Full circle. Full circle moment.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much, Dr. Poe, and thank you to everyone this evening and your patience with us.
I was going to tell Dr. Burson, there's models of the non-paper contracts.
Socky sign?
Well, not even that, it's just, yeah. Do employee-
Socky sign for something.
Self-service immunity.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we have that already. Right.
All right, meeting adjourned. Be safe, drive in.